I'm glad the JD will be there tonight. Hey, at six o'clock, let's call this meeting to order. We'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary Kay, roll call, vote please.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
Angie Schreiber, here. JD Schrader?
Here.
Dr. Julie Sprague?
Here.
Uh, no public comment, I don't think. So, um, what I would like to do, uh, tonight is to reverse the order A and B. Uh, so that way, Katie Anne can leave right after she does her B with federal grants and funds revision. Is that okay with the committee? Okay, then we will go to letter B, Policy sixty-three twenty-five procurement for federal grants and funds revision. Katie Anne, you can come down and tell us any pertinent information.
Alright, so the reason we're asking for a revision of Policy sixty-three twenty-five is due to DPI recommendation. Uh, it's been two years in the making since, um, they've been in contact with us about revising this policy. And we've fin- finally landed in, um, a good place in revising it. If you take a look at the revision, we're at the micro purchases. We're keeping it at a ten thousand dollar threshold, um, but had to remove some language behind that threshold per DPI requirement. And then in the small threshold area, we are upping that. It used to be ten thousand as well. DPI no longer allows those two to be concurrent as the same. So per DPI standards, um, they recommend two hundred and fifty for that, um, small purchase threshold. And sent us their federal policies that, um, procurement standards that they go by. I did send them the draft form to make sure that it, um, checked all their boxes. And they did give me the green light that it did and that no further adjustments are needed.
You sent to Neola or DPI?
DPI, DPI. We're working with Brian Egan through the procurement area there. So two years ago, it was flagged in, um, the audit as needing to be changed. That DPI had changed their, their thresholds and it needed to be changed and could no longer be the same. It takes about three to four months to hear back from this guy. So it's taken a bit to go back and forth on exactly what they needed. Um, and we finally, with this draft, got the green light to go forward to bring it here.
Talk me through what this actually means. So if, so if only on federal grants, if you get money, it's how you can spend it, or it's?
It's, it's, um, the regulations around, so how we can, um, expense it. So at ten thousand or below, it just says that, um, as long as it's ten thousand, not to exceed the ten thousand, we're good to go with informal procurement methods. So once it hits the two hundred and fifty though, it has to be like the sealed bid. And the processes behind it have to be different to guarantee equality amongst purchasing consortiums of that.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with board approval dollar amounts?
No, well, it, it changes our, how we spend federal dollars. Before it was ten thousand and ten thousand, we could require that there was, um, quotes and that had to be gone for at the ten thousand, debating on what it was purchasing. No longer, DPI doesn't require it. And so we had to change ours to follow the, the federal procurement.
I was just thinking, once I saw that, the, like, the Madison or the Sun Prairie School Board only votes on things. If it's, you know, like, sort of like we say, we're all gonna vote on it if it's more than ten thousand. And they say, we're only gonna vote on it if it's more than two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh.
So I would laugh that we wouldn't have to do anything at all because we'd hardly ever spend that much money.
Yeah, no, that doesn't change that, that policy at all. This just changes how we're able to go about spending federal grant dollars or federal money.
So small purchases, you have to do, one more time, under ten thousand, you don't have to?
Not to exceed, so ten thousand or below, yeah.
So what's between ten and two fifty?
That is the two, the, those are what are considered small purchases, which, um, is the quotes and then two fifty or above is the bids.
Okay.
Just a grammatical thing, but in number two, small purchases, the second paragraph, at the very end of the first line, "An evaluation of risk and its documented procurement procedures." No apostrophe in it's. Let's see, English teacher need coming out.
Any other questions about what Katie Anne has brought to us with the sixty-three twenty-five procurement federal grant funds?
I just appreciate the attention, Tim, before Katie and then both with Sarah DeBoer, working this out to make sure we're in alignment, so thank you.
Am I missing something on the other attachment? There are no changes? Or is, is that going, that goes along? That goes along with? We have two attachments there. Yeah.
The first one I opened does not have any revision.
Oh, I see what it did. Yeah, that's it.
That's the current one.
That's it. You sent the current one and then the revised one. Copy, got, copy that. On the, on the buzzers. Sorry about that. Any other questions? Roque was sending this to, uh, the full board for the meeting on Monday. Okay, thank you, Katie Anne.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the first reading of Neola Update thirty-one, volume two.
Danny, I was just curious about that. When it says no board meeting will be convened, does it not technically, is this technically a convened board meeting?
No, this is a convened committee meeting, right, Mary Kay, on, on the, um?
On the agenda. I was just confused by the, I must not have paid attention to that before when I was checking the times.
And then you have a disclaimer at the bottom that says, even though in majority, the board may be depressed.
Yeah, no board action.
No action by the board will be taken. So you're covered.
I guess the disclaimer would be, the only action that would be is we take it to the board. You know, we, we send it up to the board meeting. So this first reading of Neola Update thirty-one, volume two, I know Angie, this is probably, I think this would be the first time that you've seen the, what we call, I don't know what the word for it, but the dump, uh, of policies from Neola's recommendation to update all of our policies. This usually comes to us at this time of the year, every year. And, uh, it's, it's a lengthy, uh, process, uh, that, that the district went to, went through with Neola in the beginning, as well as each year after. So, um, I think what we can do is...
Sorry, is this one like the new, what the new updates are and this is what's being redacted or what's?
No, there's two different, yeah. And then these are the administrative guidelines.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think what we will do is we will, um, since you guys are looking there, I will pull up the paper too. We'll go through each one to see if there are any questions or comments, because I know I had a few questions. We're gonna look for policy, the volume thirty-one, number two, the policies for the board. Then we're gonna look at this right through the definitions, policy number zero-one, zero-zero. And what we are looking at is what is in green, because that is what's being changed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what we are changing going to. Uh, the addition, and if something needs to be stricken, like if you see under school nurse on page three of four, uh, you'll see W I S, uh, period, S T A T period section. And that's just cleaning up the, the policy to make him, make all the policies uniform. So they changed that to with stats. So the changes is under administrator, uh, to add is employed with an administrative contract. And then and/or, add the or to that, to there.
That seems pretty uncontroversial.
Most of these are, are just updating, a lot of them, what you'll find too, is changing the verbiage from his and her to, uh, they or there, uh, which is, is, seems to be the norm. And then they give a, where under school official, they actually give a, uh, definition of the term school official. If I'm reading that correctly. Are there any questions on this policy of definitions? This is defining what could be referred to later in the policies. Hearing no questions, we'll move along to policy zero-one-six-one, which this is the parliamentary authority.
Hold on, hold on one second, Danny.
Okay.
Voting, vote at a meeting of the board. The law requires the board members must be present in order to have their vote officially recorded and be available by a roll call. A board member's presence at a meeting includes his or her presence, oh, if attending by telephone, so long as remote access is compliant. Okay, I just thought that, okay, no voting.
And I think that policy actually changed during the, during COVID. Because before it was strictly in person.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody could be on the phone, but they couldn't vote by the phone. But that changed during, uh, twenty-twenty.
You can see how often this gets revised too by the, the three different ones from twenty twenty-one.
Good catch, JD.
I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so parliamentary authority, what this is doing, um, they are giving, when appropriate, the board president appoint a parliamentarian who shall decide any challenges to parliamentary procedure. Uh, the parliamentarian need not be a board member. Could be, but doesn't have to be. That's the way that I would interpret that, correct? And we have already done the, uh, the other part there. Mary Kay has given that cheat sheet for all of us to have for rules of order of parliamentary procedure. Any questions about that? Okay, so if there are no questions or, or comments or changes, we're going to assume that this is gonna go to the full board for the first reading on Monday, okay? Uh, policy twelve thirteen, uh, student supervision and welfare. You can go through, um, most of what I saw from here, even looking again, uh, this afternoon is the change in he, she to they or that, or they or there.
Do you think that this one would upset our community members?
Do you think they were changing it? That's been done quite a bit.
I mean, I don't really, I don't care at all, I'm just...
To me, it reads the same way.
I, I just meant, I didn't know if it's, this is like a gendered word thing.
I don't, I don't look at it as that personally. That's my own personal viewpoint. Uh, and when I looked at this early on, whenever Mary Kay sent it out to us and I began to peruse all of this, I, I personally thought it was okay.
Okay, I don't care.
But that's, that's me. I mean, I don't know what the rest of us feel like.
So tired, aren't you?
I mean, even in my own workplace, they're changing policies and procedures like this as well. Okay, so moving to policy fourteen twenty-one, this is the criminal history record check and employee self-reporting requirement. And you see the addition, what they want to add is example of non-moving violations, failure to yield, failure to obey traffic signal, unattended vehicle, illegal parking. My question on that was, should we have, I don't know what, if they are listing just those, are there other minor traffic offenses that might be included in there? Are we?
So, if my understanding is correct, so if we have a staff member and they get a, a parking ticket, they have to report that?
No.
No?
My understanding is it would be covered under minor traffic offense, like a speeding ticket. When we met with Neola, I think they were just getting questions, bless you, about the, um, the ones listed there. And, you know, are they covered by minor traffic offense? Or do those now in green have to be reported? So they just gave additional examples, is how I read it and what I recall in meeting with them.
Do we hire people that have, like, drug charges, drug backgrounds to work with students?
Possibly, if it's not a felony.
And if it is, is THC a felony?
Well, that depends on a lot of, um, circumstances that I don't have memorized, depending on the year, the time.
If it's a felony, then it, then it is a felony, but...
Yeah, felonies are a flag that typically...
We would not?
Right.
Is there a specific exception in HR rules for schools? Like, because normally a normal employer is not supposed to look at that, right? But if you're, work with kids or something, is there a?
I think that would go through the background check.
Yes, so every new, um, hire, even volunteers, have to complete a background check. Where that felony specifically would be flagged. And if it is anything, um, involving children, I know there is a different threshold. I can't legally explain that, but then that is vetted as well.
Who does our background checks?
Um, locally at Aspiris. I'm sorry, that's the drug screen. I would have to check with Melanie.
Would the police department be doing our background checks?
Usually it does fingerprinting.
Typically, no, it's like a third party.
Okay.
Fingerprinting is part of, um, having a teaching license now.
Okay.
So even if you don't have any type of record, you still have to submit your fingerprint.
Okay.
Um, every, so often.
Right.
I'll find out, Danny, and like, you know.
So if I, if I came in to apply for a teaching position and in my background check, it showed up that I had a felony, then the school district would say no, or is there a threshold, is that, I'm hearing you, is there a threshold in there that we could say yes?
There may be like a statute of limitations or something now, I'm guessing on the legal speak. So if it was long ago and not part of your record anymore.
Yeah.
You know, but I'm not well versed in all of that.
It doesn't come up very often, probably.
Not, I don't think at all since I've worked here.
And who would make that team? Is the hiring team would make that call, or is there a certain person?
No, the background checks go specifically to HR. The hiring team doesn't even see those.
So Melanie Ryan?
Yes, so we have had, like, we recommend a hire and then the background checked is flagged. And so we don't go through with the hire. We have had that.
Okay.
I would check on that felony, uh, for Monday, just to clarify.
Yeah, okay.
That might be a, uh, an item that people would wanna know about.
Okay.
What happens in the event I, I'm an employee here and all of a sudden I do something to get a felony? What happens then?
I would bring it to the board.
Okay.
So in that case, the district employee should notify, all districts should notify the administrator, but no more than three calendars. Yes, that's what that says there.
Yeah.
Or to legal.
So if a teacher gets a speeding ticket, but they don't drive any kids or any district vehicles, they do not have to report?
Even if they get a speeding ticket, they wouldn't, and they do work with kids, they wouldn't have to report.
Right.
Tomorrow, our insurance will probably know, but it, whatever.
However, it, I, I'm not, I'm clear, I'm clear as mud now, or any moving violation must be reported.
So keep going.
If the employee drives, thank you.
Yeah. Cause that's how I got on that too. I had that, I had that exact same thought process.
Thank you. So if that person is driving the van that we have, because that's the only, oh, no, we have the, the box trucks and, um, other vehicles too. Okay, any other questions about policy fourteen twenty-one? And then Julia bring those questions, answers back for Monday. Uh, policy twenty-two sixty, copy of English language proficiency, which it appears that I do not have tonight. Are there any questions, or Julie, do you need to point anything out in this?
Just as a side note, when English learners became a subgroup of students, it started out as ESL, English as a Second Language. The name has changed quite a few times since I picked up that license in the early nineties, I think it was. And so they continually revise, um, language and I, that's what we're seeing here.
You can see all the revisions on the back of the second page too. Any questions, or we move this forward the way that it is? Gogi, I heard Angie say move forward. Uh, policy twenty-four fourteen, this is on human growth and development.
So this one, if I may, Danny.
Sure, go ahead.
Amy took through the curriculum committee because she is overseeing the human growth and development, um, part of health curriculum.
Yes.
And we have to convene a committee, so she's in charge of all of that, so that we are compliant. So when we, what you see in green there, those first three were optional, um, on the second page. And the committee did choose to take all of those and bring them forward to you tonight. And the rest is just, um, again, to be compliant with DPI and state statutes.
So Amy did get a committee, um?
She's working on it. It will convene, um, this spring. First one we've had in, well, definitely my tenure. There may have been one back in the day, but not since the statute.
Yeah, I remember one when I first moved here when Roxanne Borneman was super. Yeah.
So it's time to get that.
So the committee that met that pushed these three options through, what committee was that?
Uh, she met with, um, Amber and Allison, the two health teachers, and consulted with other teachers. I was there. Um, what I liked mostly that she did was she contacted other districts around us who had already had this up and running to make sure that...
Yeah, and I think she mentioned that too in a, in a committee level. The only question that I have is on page one, on, on number four, under B. That is stricken, but then on page two, on letter A, it's, it's right back in there. So is it because maybe that was put in the wrong spot?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would not be...
That's what my assumption was.
Right, that would not be our striking, that would be Neola's, of course. And I agree with you, I think, because it was redundant.
Okay. Another strange question is, who, who determines when age appropriate is? Or what age appropriate means? Cause, you know, that's probably different for different people.
Right.
Probably doesn't say that in our definitions page, does it?
No, I went back and looked.
The fifth grade, as long as I've been in the business, is the, uh, human growth and development, the TOCK.
Right.
Um, which really only focuses on puberty. And then Allison's curriculum, which is new at the middle school, would not go into, um... I'm looking for the heavy hitters here. I would not expect, maybe basics about pregnancy and prenatal development and childbirth. Um, but that would be covered more in depth, certainly at the high schools. So I think it's developmentally appropriate, but who deems that, probably collaboration?
Would be the committee maybe, yeah, okay.
I would think.
It's just, that's gonna advance because now we live in the digital era.
Yeah.
So you have TikTok, you have YouTube, all that kinda stuff, so the kids are getting exposed to it much earlier.
Before they ever, yeah.
Yeah, and then with, you know, girls' periods starting younger and younger, they're able to get pregnant younger and younger. So I think, whether we like it or not.
Do we still collaborate with, uh, local groups, uh, such as the Hope Pregnancy Resource Center? I know they used to prior to COVID, but I think COVID changed a lot of things.
When we met, Amber Domitz has, um, community personnel come in and speak to the kids on various topics, and I think that was one that she mentioned.
And there's probably others through Aspiris that comes in too.
When I was at high school, I was HIV teen peer educator and stuff like, is that still exist? Or would Karen Hagerness retire, did that maybe go away?
I don't know, I've not heard of that one, but...
That's probably, I have no idea when they stopped doing that.
Do we, how many, do you know what her statistics are of teen pregnancies at high school?
I don't.
Okay, cause I know when, when I was high, when I came back, I was senior, I was pregnant. And there was a class of us that were together because we were, you know, obviously all pregnant, so.
And...
I do know we wouldn't, do you mean you had a separate class, like only four? I don't, we wouldn't do that anymore.
We wouldn't say that yet now.
But that's about all I know, but I can check, so.
I know the director of Hope Resource Center, I know that she used to come prior to COVID, Christina Wilson. Um, and I didn't know if anything has started back now, uh, with her agency. Like JD said, Karen Hagerness would come in too, but now she's retired. And I don't know what programs she had that we might look back into, to see what she was doing here.
I, I know you said that, like, you wouldn't do that because you feel like you're singling the, the girls out. But honestly, that was a very nice resource for us because it gave us camaraderie, right? And then also taught us a lot of skills that we did not have. I was not a kid, I was not one that, I never babysat kids. Like, I learned how to change a diaper the day I took my son home from the hospital. So I, I didn't have any of those skills, so that class was really good.
Life skills.
Yeah. Learn as you go. Took on a whole new meaning.
That's right.
So...
Are there any other questions about policy twenty-four fourteen? Okay, moving on to policy twenty-four-six-zero-point-zero-three, independent educational evaluation, the IEE. And, uh, the difference on this is just on page two.
I just wanna say, it says that parents should submit to the district a written request for an IEE. Um, I just wanna say that parents have absolutely no idea what an IEE is, nor do they know who to submit it to, what the process is, or anything. I've had, I've heard from so many different parents that are struggling with their, with their kids, that they've reached out to counselors, they've reached out to the teachers, they don't know what the next, um, step is, who, who, they should be contacting, what the process is. So we need to get that on our website loud and clear on every single school page, not in our policies, on the, on their Facebook pages.
And this is very rare. This is if an I E P is not, like, if the parent doesn't agree with what the I E P team comes up with. And they are always members of the team. So, again, I'm old as dirt, so in third, I think this is thirty-six years for me. I've never been a part of one of these.
Okay, the process, whatever process.
The IE process, I E P process should be on our website very clearly, but I will double check on that too.
Can you give me an elevator, um, education about the IEE, because?
I E P?
No, I E E, this...
Oh, this one?
Yeah, independent educational evaluation. Can you just give me a, a quick what that is, what they're doing to the students? I know you said you've not been part of one, but...
So there are criteria that have to be met in order for a child, um, to be found to have a disability.
Okay.
So let's say we do our testing. There's schools psychologist testing, um, there's academic testing, if it's behavioral. You know, that's looked at, all of these different avenues. And, um, a good example would be... And a good example would be, I just lost it. Autism. Autism is a medical diagnosis. So if we do our testing and we determine as a school team that the child does not need an IEP because he or she is successful in school, maybe not perfect, but the criteria is not met. And the parents are really upset because they strongly believe their child is demonstrating autistic tendencies. They might then want to seek a different opinion from a third party.
So for some of our parents who are maybe struggling with the IEP issue, that their child is being declined, or I don't know what the correct verbiage is there, then they might need to know about this Independent Educational Evaluation process.
Yes, typically though, if they're dissatisfied with the decisions, they'll ask to reconvene the IEP. And so everyone gets back together. That's nine point nine times out of ten how that is solved. They always have a voice, and so they can request to reconvene at any time. This would still be a last resort, but.
Because Heidi, I guess I've wondered about this before. I vaguely remember people talking before, oh, we're giving too many IEPs. But I wonder which percentage of the ones get turned down.
She did share that at a committee meeting, yeah. So I can check with her. I'm also curious now if she's ever had one of these in her career. I'll find out.
So the change here would be striking what was in the policy and adding the new verbiage there, which talks about the expenses, the cost. Any questions? Okay, moving along to policy twenty, wait a minute, I see JD's still looking. Are you good? Policy twenty-five twenty-two, Library Media Centers.
This was timely as well, since Abby Matic is our new library media specialist. Very comprehensive, as you can see. Amy as her supervisor, I know they went through these changes to make sure they didn't have any questions. And all of these are Neola recommended, of course, but then they come to you.
I know whatever, what caught my attention was the all requests for reconsideration of library material under this policy shall be addressed as follows. From all of that, the process there is lengthy, it's a process, and nobody likes process. But if you would look at item F on page three, the decision of the board is final. So it still comes back to the board as the final decision. That's, I was looking at that for that in there. And I don't think Neola would ever intentionally leave out the board's final. Stay there.
Decisions on reconsidered material will stand for ten years before a new request for reconsideration of those items will be entertained. Interesting.
So if the team reconsiders and then the board backs up the reconsideration that, no, we don't want XYZ, then that will stand for ten years and cannot come back. Kind of tough because we see a lot of changes in ten years, don't we?
You think that's too tough? Supposed to probably avoid a constant fight?
Probably.
That's what I think it is.
I don't, I don't remember us, did we do this process, sort of?
No, this is new here.
But did we do some process a couple of years ago?
Well, we went through all of this whenever we first took on Neola.
I mean, the book, the book process, did we argue about some books once?
We've had some questions.
Discussions and questions, yeah.
That have always, they have never, again, in my tenure, gone to this level. Usually satisfied at the building level, even the teacher level. Because I know as a teacher, if there were anything controversial, or let's say swear words in a book, back in the day, I would just notify adults so that they were aware. And if they wanted an alternative text, we could do that.
And keep in mind, though we're putting this information to the board for the first reading on Monday, it'll have to go for a second reading. So if there's other questions that come up from this, we can always bring back those questions to the board during that second reading as well. Okay, let's move on to policy twenty-seven zero zero point zero one, School Performance and Accountability Reports. You see the only, the only changes there is just verbiage. Shall be provided by the district and the report shall be provided with the notification of educational options.
What is the notification of educational options?
That's a statute that says annually, and they linked it now to the report card, we have to let every parent and guardian know what the options are. So we list our elementary schools, All Saints, of course, Peace, RVA, anything that's associated with our district. And we have Mattoon on the horizon, so that when that officially opens, we'll have to list that as well.
And that statute, is that the statute that's listed there at the bottom, one fifteen point three eight? I didn't look at it, but that might be.
That's a tough question, Danny.
I failed, I didn't look at that.
I can check in my last one that we sent to parents.
Okay, while Julie is checking that, we'll move on to policy thirty-one twenty point zero four. This is the employment of substitutes. The bottom statement there is just when we're using long-term subs. If they're still in that position of a long-term sub at the end of the year and will be for the next year, we're going to provide them with a letter stating that we would like to retain them. Is that, is that the way I understand that?
Will receive.
And it may not be in June, it'll be just sometime during that summer, correct?
I would think so.
Is there a reason why that Neola would strike in June, or does that put the administration in a box?
Probably to give more leeway, flexibility.
I can't believe the number of things we're supposed to have policies for.
It's a lot, isn't it?
Well, if you ever go through our policies, our policies and our administrative guidelines don't match up on a lot of stuff.
Which is funny because Neola made them both.
Yeah.
But I will say on that, this is a thousand times better than what we had prior to Neola.
That is true.
Oh, my goodness, that was horrible. Okay, sorry, policy thirty-one twenty-one, Criminal History Record Check and Employee Self-Reporting Requirements. This one just goes along with the one that we discussed just recently. Mary Kay, you want to shed some light there? No?
You probably see it again with support staff too. It was through administration for the professional staff and support staff. So that you'll see that wasn't a lot of the policies.
If you look, if you did review the material, you saw that there were some that said the same thing. Policy thirty-two thirteen, Student Supervision and Welfare. Yes. Okay, policy.
I like how they added that sentence, saying a staff member can post a picture of their little kid.
Yeah, I do.
Very thorough.
Policy forty-one twenty point zero four, this is employment of substitutes. And this again is a second policy of what we just read just a moment ago. Policy forty-one twenty-one, copy of Criminal History Record Check and Employment Self-Reporting Requirement. The same thing that we have read before. And if you notice too throughout, they're changing the verbiage to match. Some places the policies were saying Board of Education, and some places it was saying Board. So they're going through that process of change in all that to save the board. Policy forty-two thirteen, Student Supervision and Welfare. This is the same as the last one. Policy fifty-one thirteen, Open Enrollment Program, inter-district. There is some changes in here, just give you a minute to review those.
What number did you say, Danny?
Fifty-one thirteen. And Heidi brings this to us in January, and it comes through Heidi, but you report on that too, don't you, Mary Kay?
Yeah, I do the open enrollments, a lot of the supplies, a lot of this was talking about wait lists and.
Are there any districts around that have a waitlist that you're aware of?
I believe McFarland does have a waitlist for their enrollments.
I thought that was interesting the other day. So Wausau is recombining their high schools because they're having the planning enrollment too. I never would have guessed that Wausau would have that planning enrollment.
I was driving and heard that on the radio, and I was shocked. Are there any questions about this? There's a lot of changes in there that Neola is recommending. Hearing none, we will move on to policy fifty-three forty, copy of Student Accidents, Illness and Concussion. And the big change here is adding the sudden cardiac arrest. Are there any questions, discussion regarding what Neola's recommendation is there? And for a lot of our extracurricular sporting activities, we really rely upon Sandy and her team from Aspiras that are always there watching the players.
I saw on the internet the other day that, like, West Virginia or some state is called it the diamond rule, and they're going to make sure there's an IED, AED, AED at every athletic event, or every contact athletic event. And I guess then it made me wonder if we do that already.
Do we have one, we have one at Schofield Stadium at the concession area, isn't it?
I think so. Dar's the one who checks on the batteries and does all of the. But yes, one at Schofield Stadium, every school, of course, and athletic contests.
Have you ever used an AED machine?
I went to the training like eight years ago. Whether I would, I think there's a picture, right, you put it on your heart in two places.
Yeah, here and here, yeah. Not on your heart, no, over here and here.
On the.
That's where I'm going next week, is to training for that, yeah. It's, the AED machine is a really valuable tool for doing CPR because it tells you what to do. You don't have to, yeah, you don't have to think about, oh, do I do chest compressions, do I do breaths? Once you hook up that AED machine, it tells you what to do and when to do it. It's, and that's a nice tool, it's not a cheap tool, but it's a nice tool.
We have the Community Health Foundation meeting today, and one of, somebody, did you say that, about Tom? Was talking about too many concussions and not enough money to.
Right, so I didn't catch the money part, I just know that there's.
Someone else said they were talking to Tom.
Right, I think Aaron Beginsky talked about that.
Maybe you should ask him if he has to come and work with us.
Too many concussions, what?
Just in, there's an uptick in young people concussions through contact sports, which we knew. But then we have the Impact Concussion Protocol establishes a baseline each season. So then if a student does suffer a head injury, we can determine with doctor's help.
That's what the Community Health Foundation pays for, that assessment.
Yes, and in the past, I know we've put in money for new helmets and, yeah.
Yeah, and the new helmets, they have all of the padding that's inside there to help with that.
Yeah, something like, it was just a half conversation. It made me wonder if we needed money for concussion prevention, and that sounded like better money than jersey money.
But like I've been told over the last few weeks, if there's one thing that our community has got, we have great wraparound care for everybody with all the groups and organizations that we have around our community. To be such a size community that is, we have a great wraparound care. Sorry, going to policy fifty, any other questions on that? Policy fifty-five seventeen point one, this is bullying. And you'll notice, sorry, the changes are not in green to stick out to us, but you can see the changes there.
Do we have a copy of a summary of the policy incorporated in teacher? Oh, this policy will be provided to organizations in the community. Additionally, the policy will be posted, it used to, oh, so it used to be required to be posted in our buildings, but now it is not.
Probably because of online and handbooks.
I just, you know, I don't know that, do you think we have it posted now somewhere?
Probably in the counseling office, I would think.
But not like on a, I don't know.
Not on the wall, no.
If we have wrote it on the wall, I don't know that that would have that much effect anyways, to remind kids not to bully each other.
And if we have, like, we went to Speak Up, Speak Out, I know that is advertised in our schools. But not the policy per se, but what to do if you see that behavior.
Are there any other questions about policy fifty-five seventeen? Hearing none, policy seventy-four forty point oh one, copy of Video Surveillance and Electronic Monitoring. I noticed on page two that stuck out to me, the administrator may authorize the viewing of recorded images. Is all of our Neola policies, do they state administrator as you, Julie? Or are we flip-flopping those terms superintendent and administrator?
They, I believe, went all to administrator.
Go back to that definition page, this one was on there.
Yeah, because it just changed the definition of administrator to anybody that reports to the superintendent.
So in the third paragraph of this one, they have district administrator. So maybe admin means anyone with that contract and then district administrator. Some used to say superintendent, but he's taken all those out.
Administrator is an employee who holds a position of leadership over defined function or department of the district.
Yeah, and then if you turn the, so if you turn a couple more, then district administrator, the administrative head of the school district, sometimes locally referred to as a superintendent.
So they can interchange that in the policy.
In policy, may call you district administrator. What do you like better, Julie, superintendent or district administrator?
Doesn't matter to me, actually.
Just call in time for the coffee stop.
It's just through all policies, a lot of ways it gets muddied.
Neola's gone to district administrator. We were just saying they've taken superintendent out of policies the last several years.
But that's an interesting question for this, you know, so whoever is an administrator can watch the.
So if there's a fight at the middle school, it is fairly common for parents or guardians to say, I'd like to see the footage, and we don't do that. Police can see the footage, certainly, but we don't let other parties because we don't have consent to share. That's a slippery slope we don't go down.
So currently, our policy says the building principal may authorize. And that limits who can authorize. So now Neola's saying let the administrators. So anybody that's an administrator at Door Street could authorize, or the principal.
Right.
Yeah. Could potentially a principal from another building authorize the video from that building? According to this, they could.
Yeah, I don't know why that would happen though, unless somebody's filling in or a bus tape.
Could be, yeah.
Actually, bus tapes though, that goes through.
That's to their company, yeah.
Right.
Well, the bullying stuff goes through the school though.
Right, but I mean, looking at the tape, that has to be generated by Mellett, we, we don't have access to that unless they choose to give us access.
Okay.
Good discussion. Any other questions about video surveillance and electronic monitoring?
I'm learning so many things today.
Okay, policy eighty-one forty-six, notification of educational options.
So this is consistent with the one, but my letter had a different statute number than was in here, so I made a note of that to check.
Oh, what they refer to?
Right. So they only listed in policy twenty-seven hundred point zero one, they only had one statute at the bottom, one fifteen point three eight, my letter references one eighteen point five seven, so I'll check that out. It might be just the report card.
That is on the bottom there, one eighteen point five seven.
Of this one.
Yeah.
Right, but remember you asked me to check out this one?
Oh, yes, yes, gotcha.
So now that I see it here, I feel better, I'm certain this one is just the report card then, so.
Okay.
We're covered.
Any questions on eighty-one forty-six? Policy eighty-seven forty of bonding. I think this is, just cleaning up what we already had. Any questions about bonding? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the next set, which is the Administrative Guideline Manual. This is the, the manual that gives guidelines to the administration. And we will look at AG fifteen twenty-one, which is rescinding the federal group health continuation or the Cobra. I don't think we have any discussion on that, it's just removing, rescinding that. Moving on to AG sixteen thirty point zero one B, which is FMLA record-keeping requirements.
Danny, my only question on the one they're rescinding, so is that policy completely, they erased, erased every word, so does the policy still sit there with a heading?
No.
Or is it just completely gone?
It'll be completely gone, yeah, yeah. And this is administrative guidelines too.
Sorry.
So the AG guideline sixteen thirty, FMLA record-keeping requirements. This is associated to the policy eighty-three ten is what they wanted to note in, inside there. So the administrative guidelines, if I understand them correctly, are, are to refer you back to a policy.
Which is, might be so ridiculous, why not just have lots of.
Why not just have policy, yeah.
This makes it more confusing.
We can make that recommendation, because I wondered that myself.
Just to wipe out the administrative.
Wipe out the administrative guidelines and make it all policy.
Yeah, why have two sets?
Can you make that question to Neola, Mary Kay, and bring an answer to us on Monday?
One is vague and one is even more vague.
Because that would help with. I'm sure that would help with administration and everybody across the board.
Maybe Neola will give us a thousand dollars a year back because we don't need their other.
We don't need the AG part, right?
We can recommend that too.
Okay, um, AG twenty.
I did write MKP in my notes, so.
Yeah. AG twenty-five twenty-two, student use of libraries and media centers.
It should just match the policy.
It goes back to that other policy, yes. AG thirty-one seventy, we're going to rescind the substance abuse.
I don't agree with that. I'm certain it's elsewhere, Angie, and it's a duplicate, I just can't tell you where else it appears right now.
Yeah.
Mary Kay, maybe you can ask Neola if this indeed is a duplicate somewhere in the policies? And that's why they're suggesting this to be rescinded.
I'm sure he told us when we met with him, but.
If it is, I wonder why they even put it out there in twenty sixteen to begin with. Well, we didn't start them in sixteen, it was after. Next, AG thirty-three sixty-two point oh one, which is reporting threatening behaviors.
The only thing I take issue with this is that, so, and I understand why, but like, I would like to see in addition to this that, um, after all of the procedure has been followed, that there's a notification sent to the board on this. Not with the details, but just giving us a heads up, because maybe not in like bigger school districts, but like in our smaller district, you know, rumor, the rumor mill starts flying. And when we have people coming at us with different things, you know, questions, well, what happened here, what happened there, I heard this, I heard that, and we don't know anything. It would be nice to have some kind of heads up, and we, as board members took an oath, and we know what we can and cannot say to the community, so.
Would it be, would it be suffice to say that Julie can send us, after something like this has happened, that there was an incident that took place? And the administration is working through, again, because we can't give the details of what's going on to the, to the community, but rather than saying to the community, I don't know, I didn't hear about this.
Right.
Then the community's hearing, yes, we heard something from administration, um, what's.
But to give us something, because otherwise we look like, I guess, kind of like, we're just like clueless idiots, I guess, to the community.
Of course nowadays, when something happens, like when the fire incident happened here at the high school, while it was going on, I got a text from my, my son before you even got the letter out, so that happens when it's.
Me too, yes.
And she's walking out the door, never be ahead of that.
You can't, no. But there's things that happens that's not school-wide.
Right.
That if we had a note from Julie saying this is, we had an incident or.
So I, I feel I do, because this is not like a, a student fight where there were no injuries or, but like I, I try to keep you abreast of nine-one-one calls. Or if there is a police response, I would definitely let you know. So are you, I hope you're not looking like for every student, because we couldn't keep up with that.
No, I, no. No, I'm saying like, um.
This.
Like this, okay, so it says, and where does it use to indicate to the staff member that his or her safety and well-being are in jeopardy, so if something major happens, something like that.
I would be inclined to let you know.
Yeah.
So that would be like a student threatening a teacher?
Student or another, or staff to staff or.
Or staff to staff, staff to student?
Yeah, something like that, I mean, just a heads up, I mean, you know, let us know, you know, and if, if you've done any, like an investigation, whatever, and, and somebody gets let go, just a heads up.
Well, if somebody is terminated, you will definitely know.
Okay.
Because you have to approve that if it's a teaching contract.
Okay.
Angie, I also believe the other way around, if a board member hears from the community about something going on, we should send Julie a text message at the very least and say, hey, I had a community member ask me about this, can you give me some insight?
Okay.
You know, we should let her know, because maybe she did not know that something happened, you know, because she can't be in all of our buildings at once.
Yeah.
If you could, then let me, cool.
I don't know.
I think I'm too old.
I like to really be in different places.
But like, if there's an investigation, I alert you or?
Well, yeah, just a heads up, I mean, like I said, we all took oaths, we know we can't be out, you know, you know, blabbing our mouths, but we, just so we have a heads up, and we're not caught off guard, so we're not like, what the heck, I don't know what in the world's going on. You know, we can answer it appropriately, you know, we can say, you know, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can, blah, blah, and it'll be handled appropriately, but.
I think we're on the same page, so if you, if something comes up and I don't communicate or, you know, and you think of it, ask me.
Okay.
Because I agree with what you're saying, but I, it is very infrequent, which is a good thing.
Well, right, yeah, and I don't want you to think we're overstepping our bounds or whatever, but if, you know, if we get asked from community members, well, what, what's going on with this, or, you know, or comments from students and stuff, you know? You know, it would be nice to have, be able to answer with something, so, yeah, that's just that.
Any other questions about the AG for reporting threatening activities or behaviors? The next administrative guideline is another one to be rescinded about the federal group health continuation Cobra.
Why are they doing that? Is it for the Illinois or something, something, something?
I think it is up to individual districts, so we definitely have Cobra. But it's probably not. The same for all Neola clients to have a policy like this, I'm speculating JD, because I can't remember what our rep told us. Oh, thank you.
That could be an answer for Monday night too.
If we're completely taking away the option when we take away the policy, or if we're just taking away the policy.
I know we have Cobra, because I've been in meetings where Melanie makes sure, right, employees know.
And the next administrative guideline again is rescinding the substance abuse.
Yeah, and if you can find out if that's a duplicate or what's going on with that.
Mary Kay, I want to know just out of curiosity, how many pages total the policy manual is?
I don't even know.
A lot.
I mean, is it like ten thousand or something?
Well, I have almost all of it printed off, it's about that thick.
Which is nothing compared to what it was, because I had three binders that thick prior to, when I first came on the board.
That's just the policy, now, that's not the administrative guideline.
Uh, the administrative guideline forty-three sixty-two point oh one, reporting threatening behaviors, once again, uh, this is, I feel like this is the same as.
Yeah.
As what we have. And the forty, the next one is the, another Cobra that's being rescinded. So we'll jump to AG fifty-two hundred, which is copy of attendance. And I noticed they're striking out the word or guardian. Is it because in the definitions, parents is defined as guardian caretaker?
Was it, is that what you?
I don't know.
Yes, the major or natural or adoptive parents or the party designated by the courts as a legal guardian, custodian or surrogate of a student.
Like teachers being loco parentis, was that for a legal term, JD?
Fancy.
That was the senior year I was married, my husband was my parent.
Moving right along.
I'm just saying.
Uh, any questions about, uh.
So your type clearly recovered under that definition.
Yeah.
Somehow there.
Yep, how much stuff, huh?
No hearing, no questions, moving to AG fifty-three twenty, immunization of school, of students in school. And I think this is just cleaning up the verbiage.
Do you think DHS changed their webpage and then screwed up this policy?
Yeah, that's probably what happened there.
Wasn't it like, we don't want to do this again, let's just get rid of the link?
Yeah, yeah. The next one, AG fifty-four ten, promotion, placement and retention, this is, this is for students, correct? This is whenever they're being promoted, or where they're being placed in school, or if they're being retained.
So if they go on to the next grade, this is, covers that?
Yes, that would be the promotion.
Yep.
And then the placement, what I'm understanding is if somebody comes into the district, that's where they're placed.
So where does it cover, like, it says occurs when a student's doing the quality of work that indicates the student has met the criteria established by policy fifty-four ten. And this administrative guideline should be moved to, forward to next grade, so what establishes the quality of work?
It would be answered in policy fifty-four ten.
Of policy, okay, not the, but it, okay, so in policy fifty-four ten, it does not clearly say you need to have fifty percent.
It's so subjective, right?
Yes.
Because we're, we're trying to tighten, but even teacher to teacher, they will assign grades differently.
Right.
And like Amy just reported at committee, now we have a consistent grading scale district-wide, which we didn't have before, but there are still nuances. Old school was homework was a huge part, and educational trends are moving away from that. It's more about what a student knows and is able to do, so it runs a gamut, but it's very broad.
Well, right, but like, so we have students that have gotten Fs. Or two years and are still being.
Yeah, Fs really don't matter, as you know, until you're a credit-based school like high school.
Right, they're in high school, they've gotten two years or more of Fs and they're still getting to the next grade, so how is that? At what, where, at what line do we stop?
Well, I can be considered a junior, but if I haven't passed freshman English, I don't have that credit, I'm not going to graduate, so it's a, um.
So how, how do they keep moving forward though? That's what I don't understand.
Well, we don't, at, at high school, so they can be back-scheduled, although we're trying to move away from that too and do more of that in summer, because it just, it's expensive to back-schedule.
Well, right.
During the year, so it isn't necessarily about, um, a chronological order. Like, if I fail freshman English and for whatever reason I pass as a sophomore, and again as a junior, that's great, but I still have to earn that credit.
The credit, yeah.
But we're not going to say you can't move forward in anything, it does not have to be sequential or chronological.
But what if you're not passing anything?
Well, we invite you back by the law, we have to take every student, and we'll keep trying.
Wouldn't they just stay as a freshman?
We sort of had this conversation once.
We did at committee.
We tried to figure out that it was such a rare occurrence that.
Yeah, so I guess what, what are you thinking, because there are elective credits that are open to all grades.
Right.
So.
What I, what I'm seeing is that we're just passing kids through. How's that helping them?
At which level, high school?
Oh.
Well, we try to help them, but we would never, if a student doesn't meet third grade standards, we're not going to have a twelve-year-old in third grade. Retention has never worked, it was a, it was a social norm that used to have some teeth.
Yeah.
And it doesn't anymore, because research shows it doesn't work, like, kind of a blood from a turnip if a.
It's really weird. Let me rudely interrupt you here, because John Hattie always said, oh, look how bad retention works. But now, I don't know if you watched that, it's a three-hour-long video I sent you the other day.
Not.
They brought in, they brought in somebody from Mississippi, so a couple of years ago, Mississippi passed a third-grade retention law, if you could not read, and they, they did a study on the kids who barely were above the cutoff line? And passed, and the kids who were below and got the extra intervention, and those kids who got held back and got the extra intervention were reading way, way better in the next several years. So it was one of the first times, so, but this, this was a, there was a bunch of state legislators at this science of reading convention, and then.
So it does work.
One of, in this case, they were, she was trying to persuade the state legislature to have a third-grade retention law, you know, so that was an interesting, it's worth watching the video, it was very, it's a really smart effort. It was very, it was a really smart African-American lady who came up with this law and convinced Mississippi they were going to try it. And that's why it was damaging our pride, because we used to be way ahead of Mississippi, and now they're caught up to us. You know, they used to be the worst state in reading, and now they're passing us. It was just an interesting...
I'm not saying to feel them just to feel them, but...
You have to do something different.
It has, right.
Yeah.
So that was just different than...
And one thing we can always agree on is the student will present the same. In rare cases, sometimes parents will want a student to repeat 4K because it is not mandatory. And there can be a significant maturity, if you will. And so they're more inclined to pick up what is supposed to be learned in 4K. But other than that, like in previous cases where we take a look at, what are we going to do differently if we retain this child? You know, the answer is nothing, because we don't have staff really to have these intense interventions until they're reading at grade level, that kind of thing. So in general, we don't. But we have retained, you know? It's not an absolute, but...
So once a student comes into the high school as a freshman in ninth grade, they're going to stay with their class through senior, through 12th grade. However, they cannot receive their diploma or graduate until they've met the criteria of all credits that they needed to have.
So they would have, they might be age-appropriate senior, but then undoubtedly there would be senior activities that they can't participate in or, you know?
Yes, yes.
So I guess you would call those natural consequences. But we don't allow, or we don't prohibit them from taking electives, especially if they're passing those, if they haven't passed their core classes as a freshman. We want them to earn as many credits as they can.
Right. So you would want to, I would think you'd want to intervene sooner than...
We try, but...
If that means you're holding them back to intervene sooner, so they're more successful later, I would think that that would be a benefit to them versus passing, just passing them on and hoping that they catch up somehow.
Yeah, hope is not a strategy. So we definitely have to... I mean, you've heard the principals talk about like their fast bridge data and how we're intervening for those who are not meeting expected growth. So we have things in place. I think we're getting better all the time, but it's certainly, there are kids who fall through the cracks undoubtedly.
Yeah.
One of the interests, they had the chair, the Republican Chair of the Senate Education Committee or something at this meeting. And one of the things they were talking about is different, like state-level direction, the districts on what the reading curriculum should be. You know, should it be more knowledge-based? How much phonics should be directed? Why can't they get, this is like a thing I was telling you guys about the other night, why can't they get the schools of education to teach teachers that they should be using phonics? And one of the, part of it was, he was like, "Well, we're a local control state, and so it's really hard for us to say, 'We're going to make all you districts do that.' That's up to the school board." And so that's a weird thing, you know? Because we're the school board, but WASB says, "Don't micromanage." You know, so it was weird to hear the state legislature saying, "Well, maybe you should micromanage, because I can't micromanage." But then, you know, it was just an interesting like, it was an interesting by-play that it made me laugh. But he was just like, it's worth watching the three hours. It was good. It's that same woman who did tell the story. They brought in, and they brought in a UW Madison professor. I posted it on Facebook. Go scroll through my feed and find it. When you're bored.
When is that? Any other questions on the promotion, placement, and retention administrative guideline? Okay, the next one is AG 5610, which is suspension and expulsion. Are there any questions on this? Again, I believe it was just some grammatical corrections. I don't think anything major was changed to this administrative guideline. And last but not least, AG 7540 .02, web content functionality specifications. Any questions on this? I don't think that there was anything major there. So the valuable tool of Neola is if we didn't have their service or service like them, we would be going through this and doing this laborious task. All of our own administrations would be going through it. So it is a cost associated with it. I don't know if there's anything any better that we could find, but this is, this is something good right now. I don't think Julie wants to go through all of these and spend time researching.
Well, just finding the law every time it changes is like a chore.
That's the problem, yeah, yeah. So the next thing, I knew that this was going to take us throughout our entire time, so I did not send to you, the committee, or to Julie or Mary Kay, the, did you get that email that I just sent?
I'm just...
Did you get the three attachments? So what I sent to JD and Angie, as well as Mary Kay and Julie, is from Davis, which is Dean's assistant. The questions of the policy. Remember, he said to put the dress code policy and the policy regarding the pledge of allegiance on the burner and let them do some research on it?
I didn't get the email. Did you just send it?
I just sent it, sitting right here. So this will be on the agenda for next month's policy meeting, for us to look at these changes or...
Next month's policy meeting?
Yes, next month's policy meeting, which would be March 20th? Yeah, same, March 20th.
I'm out.
You won't be here for that meeting.
I wonder if you should, we should take them to the full board, you know, and just have a committee on that thing?
Well, these are, we haven't, we haven't gone over this at committee, because this is something that Dean told us to wait, not even review these at the committee level yet.
But they're sort of more controversial, aren't they? Just so that we might as well get the whole board's say.
Well, we...
Wait or not.
We'll still bring it through the committee level, because that's the process.
Can't believe you don't think I was trying to skip a meeting.
That we set up. However, I do want, I don't want to miss it where Julie's not here at that meeting. So we'll either be creative on what we can do to get Julie's notes about that meeting, or we might just move this to March, April, so that way Julie can be here. Is that fair, Julie?
Or do you want to have it on a different day?
She, I know she's going to be out all that week. We can meet the second week if we wanted to meet on a different day.
Well, yeah, but we're pushing it to April, then he's going to be...
Yeah, you're going to be in the field.
Yeah.
So why don't we just push it to the week before and have it on a day, different day of the week?
Do y'all have your calendars where we could look at the week of the 13th? I don't believe that there are...
Of March or of...
Of March, yeah. I don't believe that there are any other policies that we need to look at, because once we do the first reading of all of this, we don't have to meet again about this.
I said, it's going to be Monday, the 13th, the 14th, 15th.
Okay, Monday.
I'll be back on the 16th and the 17th.
Thursday, Friday of that week? What does that look like for...
Friday night policy meeting? I think that would be rough.
I don't want a Friday night meeting.
That's St. Patrick's Day.
Well, what about the week of the 6th?
Or the first week, we can... Because the information is, you know, it's just got to you now. Julie, what does your calendar look like the first week?
So we have finance and...
Besides the finance and curriculum.
Curriculum, I could...
What does your first week look like, JD, while Julie's looking?
First week of March.
Yes.
Tuesday.
Must be pretty empty, because my calendar goes from the 22nd to the 2nd, or the 28th to the 2nd with no dates.
We're looking at the week of the 6th.
Yes.
Tuesday or Thursday that week for me.
Oh, the week of the 6th.
So could we do March the 7th at 6:00, our policy committee meeting?
Yes.
If that works for both of you?
Does that work for you?
Does that work for you? And then that way, we have Julie present for that meeting, because she needs to be here for those policy meetings especially.
Remember, aren't you saying November 7th at 6:00?
March the 7th.
March.
Yeah, that's what I wrote.
There might be a November 7 meeting, but I don't know.
You did hit your head today.
Send an email out with this change to everybody, so that way JD's got the email in print, because we don't want to rely upon his concussion.
It's better than I thought it was going to.
And the only thing that we'll discuss that night, unless Mary Kay has something that comes up, will be what we just received from Davis.
Those two?
Just those two, yeah.
Yeah, JD, check it one more time.
Mary Kay, can you see if JD was included? I can, oh, I'll look under sand.
Did you do it to JD or John?